Black Dollar. September meeting in order, please. If I had the part called roll, please.
Sorry.
As far as I gotta get to the right screen here.
Chris.
Okay. Brian Herring.
President.
Mary Jean Krieger.
President.
Mitch Magnus.
President.
David Wilson.
Here.
Ryan Oswald.
President.
Heath Kirkpatrick.
President.
Joel Williams.
President.
And Dana Taylor. This time I'd ask everybody, please stand and we'll have our prayer by Mr. Heath Kirkpatrick, and please remain standing for the pledge.
Let's pray. God, thank you so much for this great city that we live in. God, thank you that you've put us in these positions. God, we recognize that you've put us here, and God, we pray for wisdom as we lead the city and represent the fine citizens of this great town. God, thank you for all the civil servants that protect us, and God, we just pray that you watch over them, and we just thank you for your grace upon us, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before you have the minutes of August 24th, and I'll entertain a motion for approval. They're pretty lengthy minutes, so.
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve in a second. There be any discussion?
There being none, all of them favor by eye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? Motion carried. Okay. We'll run down into department reports. Actually, the police chief is not here, and I'm gonna kinda feel him for him. I don't know if everybody realizes or not that our police department has helped a lot in Houston this past month. We sent two groups down there, our police department, up there before we went one week, and before we went another week, and they gave up their time at the city to go down there and help, and I wanna give kudos to those officers that did that. Also, we have an officer that's now in Puerto Rico. He volunteered to go to Puerto Rico, and I wanna give that gentleman to those officers. But I think we need to thank our police department for that.
Can we have those officers when they return and come in?
We can.
Public.
Yes, we can. Paul's not here tonight, I was gonna let him do that, and he's in a meeting in Hot Springs, Chief's Association meeting, and he's down there. Learning, I will add some other things since he's not here. His, you know, we're trying to get accredited. I really can't name the actual name of the accreditation, but it's something to do with the State Police Commission accreditation, and they only do like five a year, and I think we're gonna get on that list, and we're gonna get accredited. So that's gonna be a big thing to our police department also. Okay. Luke, I think you have something to break over.
I did not get financials out. I apologize with all the training going on from this new software. It's been kinda hectic around our office at least, along with training all the other departments on how to use the software. So everybody seems to be learning pretty well. No real pushback.
Including the mayor.
Including the mayor. He's right on. So no real pushback. I think they're gonna like it once they finally get into it, because they'll have all the information at their fingertips as well. We went through one payroll with it, we've got another one next week, and we have, there will be a gentleman coming down for more training next week on payroll again, basically just verifying that everything's running smoothly. Other than that, that's about all I've been up to this last month.
Yeah, absolutely.
But there, I appreciate all the other departments working with me, because they've had lots of questions, and I've tried to answer them as best as I could, so hopefully there's light at the end of the tunnel now for everybody.
You know what's unreal about this program that we purchased? It's got reports in there that will help us in the long run. I know the acclamation to it, you know, everybody doesn't like change, and I'm probably one of them, but after I looked at the program and stuff, it's gonna help us tremendously. It's just a matter of OJT, more or less, with the property head and everybody else. Everybody gets, you know, repetitious, it'll go a lot faster. But on the other side of it, our server's 97% at this time, or 98%.
Yeah, we're running at 98% capacity right now, and it's actually hurting some of our other programs, just from a RAM standpoint. We're struggling to be able to operate every system that we've got right now, so. But luckily, we have a new IT person coming in on Monday to start addressing.
Yeah, we don't know this yet.
So unless we run them off before then, but he's been here helping us out as well along the lines here in and out, so I appreciate that as well. And budget, I know everybody's gonna have questions about the budget. We've gotten them all in from all of the departments now. I started inputting it last week in the new system. It'll be the same type of reports, and you still should see the same information that you're seeing now.
Anybody have any questions for any of our departments? Okay. We'll move right on down to the committees. Mr. Williams, anything?
Nothing.
Mr. Magnus.
The only thing we have is something that's not on the agenda. Mr. Figer has asked to turn out the council, the creation, approval for the creation of a fund for the IT department.
Okay, you wanna deal with that? I have it on my new business notes, but.
I'd say we can wait until then.
Do you wanna bring it? Now, actually, Mr. Figer did talk to our legislative department, who needs to be, since we are creating a new department within our city, that needs to be approved by the council, more or less. But if you wanna bring that to the table at this time.
I'd say we can wait till new business.
I can scratch all my new business down here. Go ahead and go.
Okay. I'd say all it is, is the creation of this fund is for the allocation of expenses and use of the IT services throughout the city, and all we'll leave is a motion, a second for approval. And Luke, can I answer any questions in regard to it?
Make a motion that we do that.
Second.
Could I opt out of this vote on this? I don't think you can.
You do not have to opt out of this vote.
Okay.
You do not have to. I have a motion in a second on the table. Any discussion? Can I ask what would that department number be? What did you say that to be?
Well, the department numbers and fund numbers are a little different now than what you're used to anyways with this change over to the new system. Right now, the new fund number will be 250, 250. The department number, I believe, the next one in line is 21? Or I think it's.
I thought we had a 15 open.
Okay. I don't remember. Whatever the next one will be, 15 or 21 or something like that.
We'll get that to you.
We'll just make sure that it's, we don't have that on other places. I think 15 might be locked in, actually.
Yeah, good idea. Okay, any further discussion on this? There being none, all of them favor by eye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? Motion carried. We have a new department. Mr. Magnus, if you have anything else. That's you. Oh, Mr. Wilson.
No, sir.
Mr. Krieger.
No. I have to deny.
Mr. Oswald.
Just something coming up in new business.
I guess who's, Mrs. Taylor is that? I guess I am. We have, I think everybody received, this is a housekeeping ordinance, and we had to add some people to our list of authorized certain city employees and officials that contract with the city, and those new ones are Cheyenne Ireland, she's a fireman. He is, Nick Robertson, fireman. Roger Edwards, he's a fireman too.
He's a fireman too.
Look at everybody. But I do have a question, Mr. Yonah, about this last one. Do we need to put it on there like we have it there? Is that what has mother or Michael Crowe? Do we really have to do that one?
To be safe, and it's all there. I'd leave it on.
Okay. Well, Michael Crowe's mother actually does janitorial work for us on a contract basis, so we'll leave that on there.
To avoid the appearance of impropriety. Just be safe.
But has anybody got anything on this? I'll entertain a motion for approval. This is an ordinance, one read ordinance.
One single time ordinance.
I'll make the motion that it be placed on, well, I can't make the motion, but I'll ask.
I was gonna say, you called this first.
I can't make the motion. Sorry.
I'll make a motion that we place it on its first reading.
One and only reading.
By title only.
By title only.
I'm saying it.
I have a motion.
The mayor would take it.
I have a motion to place, well, I have a motion to put it on its one and only reading. I have a second. Okay, is there any discussion on this? There being none, I will have to have the clerk call the roll, please.
Brian Herring?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
David Wilson?
Yes.
Ryan Oswald?
Yes.
Heath Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor? Absolutely. Seven oh, motion passes.
An ordinance authorizing certain city employees and officials to contract with the city.
And we need a motion for adoption.
Yes, sir.
I'll entertain a motion for adoption.
Make the motion to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Motion is second. For adoption, any discussion? There being none, all of them favor by eye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? Thank you. We're gonna go all the way down into new business, and two of those actually are, well, they didn't really come out of Mr. Oswald's department, but if you wanna lead the thing, I imagine we'll turn it over to Wade. Lake Harrison cleaning out bid approval? Wade, if you wanna address that, please.
Yeah, we took bids for cleaning out Lake Harrison last week. Low bidder was Kraus Construction of Harrison for a total bid amount of $341,000. If you add on some of the other ancillary items that we worked, our cost for advertising and permits, surveys, and some disposal costs for those materials that actually have to go landfill, that brings us up to a total, and then also, I did put a little bit of contingency in there at the end, that's just to cover anything that might pop up that we're not aware of. So we've got a total project estimate right now, $365,000. We are trying to run this through FEMA, received 75% funding, the damages from that last flood that we had, that is not approved as of yet. We don't know exactly when we'll get the approval, but we are to the point that we'll need to clean this out, so. And even if FEMA does approve this, we actually have to pay all of this cost, and then they will reimburse us. So we do have to pay the full cost of everything, and then we will submit those, you know, copies of checks and payment applications and all back to FEMA, and then probably a few months later, they'll send us a check or two back, and we're to reimburse us. Assuming that these costs hold to be true, we would be looking at a city share of just over $91,000. And then also, our schedule as of right now is we'll start draining the lake the Monday after Biker Alley and Harvest comes coming, issue notice proceeding October 23rd, and we hope to have, you know, to be finally complete the project by the end of the year, December 22nd. And then this would go, see, as far as where the money would come from, it's out of the general fund. We've got a, I guess, a standalone expense account in the general fund that deals with flood damages that we, from this last flood event. So I'm asking for you to approve the $365,000 without being able to tell you for certain that we'll get 75% of that. And I just, I wanna be absolutely clear that they could come back and say, we're not approving this project. I don't think that's gonna be the case.
Are you concerned with that, with the concept, or other, you know, the other issues that they have with Harvey and Irma?
I'm more concerned with that slowing the return of the money if they approve it. I don't think that will necessarily affect weather, you know, if they approve it. But working with them has slowed down considerably since the hurricanes hit. Our project specialists that we were working with, I believe, is down the border right now. And so it's, the whole process is going very slow, and I just, I don't know when I could tell you if they approve. But we do have a lake that needs to be cleaned out, and, you know, if we don't do it during this window that we've got coming up, then we're stuck waiting for pretty much the same time next year.
Isn't 75% or nothing? I mean, is there a chance they come back and go, hey, we'll get 50%?
No, it'd be 75% or nothing, only the flood damages.
And the main reason to do it now, if we wait, not with that team of money, like if we waited till next year or something like that, is that what you're saying?
Correct. Yeah, I actually have to file for an extension right now, based off of the slowness of everything. And I think if we waited to this time next year, I don't think they would grant that extension, because the only excuse I could give them would be, well, we wanted to see if you were gonna pay a part of it. I don't think they'll accept it.
How many times have we had to get it cleaned out in the past?
This will be the third time, but it is coming more frequently now. We did it 2011, the time prior to that, I believe, was somewhere around 2000?
Someplace.
2001.
Way back there. I don't remember when it did. But that first time, I don't think we got FEMA money.
No, that was entirely simple.
Yep.
But we got the last time.
The last time we didn't get FEMA. We actually, on that one, we were fortunate enough to get FEMA money and Arkansas Department emergency management money. FEMA paid 75%, and then Adam threw in another club and half. Adam doesn't have the money for these disasters, so they're not pitching any right now.
It's gonna have to be done. So if you look at it one way, it's gonna have to be done.
And aside from the aesthetic appeal of, it looks pretty bad down there right now with all that building, we are, as part of the permits and agreements with Coral when this was originally put in, we are obligated to maintain it. That lake, we've got enough sediment in there that it's actually reducing the volume of storage, which is maintaining the volume of storage is one of the things we're responsible for. Now, I don't think they're gonna come write us a citation or fines or anything if we don't, but technically, we are obligated to maintain this.
I make a motion that we approve the non-IT V span, with the hopes that somebody will pitch in.
I have a motion and a second to approve the movies. Any further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor, I'm always very, very protective of the general fund, but we can't, if you're gonna get part of that money back, this is the time to do it.
Yeah, and I think we will, you know. It's still iffy, don't get me wrong about that. We have sent all the information in and everything, actually with the meeting on.
The flood would have contributed to a lot of this.
The flood contributed to majority of what we're doing with that's a problem, so.
Is there anything else that can be done down here? I know we got a beautiful place down there, a lot of it personal, but is there anything else to be done to control future floods? I mean, going in and turning it back into the creek again?
Well, that's.
That would remove the sediment buildup issue, yes.
That's, actually, had a meeting on this today, you know, it's talk right there, so.
Does that mean removing the weir?
Yes.
There's great discussing that as part of the, I guess you could say, a larger plan for the park area. What's being discussed is not simply removing the weir and just let it flood where it floods. That is, the discussions are happening.
Actually, there are several different, within that discussion, you know, what's stepping the weir and doing all this, several different things to it, but guess what? It's gonna have to be cleaned, even if it removes the weir.
Probably not be cleaned either.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, any further discussion on this? There being none, all of them favor by eye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? Motion carried. Now, now we need to approve the bid. And we have two bids. Have you got those for the stream or?
I don't have the two bids.
You don't have the two bids? Does everybody?
That's not, hold on.
Hold, yeah.
If that's the, it may not. Okay, so you got it.
It's just that.
Screen shot.
No, we're just approving the cheaper bid, right?
Yeah. Two bids were received, one from Kraus Construction for a total amount of $341,000. The other bid was from Eaton Construction, also Harrison. Their total bid was $394,400. So the recommendation is to award the bid to Kraus Construction.
I make a motion when you want the bid to Kraus.
Second.
Okay, motion is second, to award the bid to Kraus Construction. Any discussion? There being none, all of them favor by eye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? Motion carried. Okay, we move into the senior center. You want me to start that off? I'll, I will actually start the senior center project off. About oh, a year ago, the people that actually use the senior center, which is now is a growing group of, I hate to say, people like me, but we've, we've had some issues down there on the roof, and the face, the soffit on the front of the building, facial or whatever, and we, we did some work, we got some grant money, and we did quite a bit of work, especially on the outside part of the building, and made it look a lot nicer and everything, and we kinda halfway, we did some work on the roof, but in the middle of that building down there is a firewall, I guess, on the top or whatever, it, there's a ditch and that on it, and within that area there, we got a pretty good major leak. It's the whole roof, it's around $40,000. But we still have in that grant money, not quite, well, we have.
$11,169.
Still left in our grant book. The estimate on more or less patching the roof and fixing the leaks is around 16, 18,000 even.
Yeah, we've got, we've got two sections of basically flat roof on that building. One of them's in much worse shape than the other, and then you've got, I guess, a parapet that divides those two that is in pretty poor shape as well. An $18,000 estimate is to replace one of the sections of flat roof, and then also do the work on the, on the parapet to where, to stop those leaks. And then at some point though, I mean, the remainder of the flat roof is not in great shape. It will have to be done at some point, but we're gonna continue to try and get as much grant money as we can.
We're gonna go back after another grant from that bill up there.
And we've, we've actually already received the check for the $11,000 plus dollars. Is everybody familiar with the senior center you're talking about?
Are we?
One by the chairman?
Yes, yes. One by the chairman. So what we're actually coming to the table with is, we need to, we need to request from the council, $7,000?
$6,830 is kind of.
So we're gonna be smailing it?
No, we're gonna fix it one whole side.
No, we're gonna replace one whole block of it. I mean, it's, it's two completely different types of roofs. I'd love to go ahead and do the whole thing, but that would take another probably $20,000 to $22,000 on top of what we're paying right now.
Did you say there was a possibility of a grant maybe next year?
Yes, another grant. We're applying.
We're gonna keep chasing grant to get, get the rest of that roof done, but this will allow us to address the worst part of it.
Actually, where we got the leak?
Yeah, okay. Now, I'm just curious, why we're smailing it, you know, or?
It's just one of those situations where we've got a good dividing point between the two different roofs and the types of roofs, so it makes it easy to split it.
There's no way of putting a pitch group on there?
We're gonna actually, the plan is to put one with a pitch to help, help that drain off the backside.
But like I say, I'll entertain a motion for, what did we say?
$6,800.
$6,800, yeah, $30.
$6,800.
I'll make that motion, it's six one.
$6,800.
Thank you for that number.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor down here, second.
I'll start.
Okay, I have a second. Any further discussion?
Where's this money coming out of?
That's between you and.
Yeah.
You spend it, you all find it.
This guy, is he?
Yeah. A chance for a break, I can hear a thing, I'll just break it in the general bunch. Okay, but anyway, any further discussion? There being none, all of them favor by eye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? Motion carried. There will be some happy folks on that. Okay. Is anybody got anything else?
Yes.
Brian, you got anything else?
On this one, I have that.
I know.
All right, okay. Okay, we're gonna move down to housing, and actually, this is a confirmation. I put a pumpkin on there, and every time I put a pumpkin on there from the housing division, I get chewed out, and I wanna make sure this is an affirmative or a confirmation, right?
Yes.
Okay, what we have here is Nate Burdick has resigned off the board, and the housing commission wants to confirm a new member, and that member being Nate Wilson, and that term will commence now, but actually fulfilling the term to 9/1/2020. So I will put that confirmation on the table.
So who does the appointment if we're just doing the confirmation?
Well, you're doing the confirmation, actually.
But I mean, who's the appointment?
They decide.
The appointment.
Their board actually does, yes, yes. It's something wording in the municipal code book, the way that is, it's funny, you know, it's a confirmation. She got all, I read it too, I believe you and me, but I put a pumpkin on there every time.
We came prepared.
Yeah, but I'll entertain a motion for a confirmation of Nate Wilson.
I'll move that we confirm Nate Wilson.
Okay. Okay, have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on this? There being none, all of them favor by eye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? You have a new member, that's happening. Thank you. Okay. We scratched off a few of these. Okay, I only have one, actually, one other thing I wanna put on there, and then I have something after, so I gotta let this step fall into place, but. step on into place, but I wanna bring up Ellen back on the table. Actually, a good thing, and I told you last time, I wanted to announce this, but I didn't have confirmation on it. Ellen has gone into a contractual agreement with Methan. And they will be delivering their waste to Methan's recyclable center. And that actually is something that I couldn't push as mayor, but I've always tried to get this worked out, and now it's worked out, and I think it's gonna be a win-win for both. This will help. Actually, I think our service leadership, and that I wanted to bring to the table, and I think it's gonna be a good plus for both of them. Okay. I will go, anybody in the council have anything to bring up at this time?
I'd like a report on how the guys have spent the money for the Christmas lights.
Well, they have spent it 'cause we wrote the check already.
Haven't read the check.
There's.
Well, approved anyway.
I saw these two street walkers measuring.
Which are riding by with all in one wheel. You want me to talk now?
Can you start the walk?
I'll meet with this one quick. We got 24 hours. Sort of, I didn't spend your money. Did really good. We got, I called every distributor of the lights in the United States, the larger ones, and we went from 220 volt down to 108. So your money's bought 6,983 bulbs.
Where did you book those bulbs?
We've got 5,400 in all the reefs, and the rest are the rooftops. As of this morning, the CDB stepped up, and we've got rooftops done. So it's, it's coming along really good. I also got to order a sash that's gonna go across Main Street that is the Garland with the reef that matches our other reefs. It has three candles in it and two reindeer's. And that was at a cost of about $2,400. We are looking, our, the next project, we're gonna try and get done this year if we can. We have found for our city light poles around the square, right now we're running 800 watt sodium lamps, and we found 150 watt LEDs to go in those that are actually brighter than what we've got on there right now, and this is something I'll be coming back before you guys to approve, but what's really cool about it is we can change those colors on the poles, and that's, we don't want it to change it. But other than that, guys, what I came in and asked you for, and you guys did start it, I will thank you for it, what I come in and ask you, it's still two plus plus. Now we're waiting till the October 9th meeting to know if we're gonna have courthouse in Federal Building, but we didn't go before, and then they gave us, they gave us seven yeses and three no's. And I do wanna thank the yeses that we had with the court in court, but Christmas is coming.
I appreciate the fact that you and Charlie have spent so much time and effort in doing this, because I like Christmas and I like lights.
Well, we're trying to bring back the pride in this town.
Yeah, and that's, that's exactly it, because once I came before you before, I said, I'm not with the group. I'm a business owner in this town, I live in this town, and I want to see the pride come back. I want the kids to be able to look up and be happy. We do, we did get with the Chamber of Commerce, and they let us pick up the theme for this year for our phrase, and it's lights. I don't understand, but it is light.
People cannot afford to go to France and silver dollar city, but they can come down and go around the square.
I got Brian over there going.
Okay.
Pretty good time.
So we'll come back to the council.
I gotta, I'd like to say something. I got a couple of things, actually. I was looking at my, going through papers and stuff like that last night, and I found a disc, actually, my neighbor gave me, and it's about, I live on Windsor Drive, and there's a lot, apparently, a lot of people, you know, go kind of fast down that road. And he had come in concern, and he's a, he's a semi-retired architect, and he gave me the CD, DVD, and so I looked at the contents, and it's about traffic calming information, and it's about speed humps. And I thought I would just bring it to the council, maybe later on, he can go before as a committee meeting or something and speak about this more, about maybe some ways of deterring the, the fast drivers on our road. So I printed off some literature and read it, and I'll be glad to share it with Wade or whoever else is interested, so. The second thing I'd like to say is, as of tonight, I'd like to go ahead and tender my resignation from the City Council, or to position to, and I wanna say that it's been an honor to serve, and I've made a lot of new friends here. It's been an honor to serve. But it's been a, it's been a pleasure, sir. Brian, thank you for letting me know of the needs that we have here, and I've, I've really enjoyed it. It's been, it's been an honor, it's opened some doors in my life, and, and getting to know all of you, and I'm looking forward to going to work for the city this coming Monday full-time and hit the ground running, and I appreciate all the department heads being so patient with me and giving my employer a very generous notice, because it has helped out so much for the school at Burden. So I wanna thank you all for being very patient as we've been waiting. Looking forward to getting to work Monday, and, but I wanna thank you, thank you everyone else for the opportunity, and the citizens of Harrison for allowing me to serve. It's been a, it was short, and I wish I had more time.
Now, the question is, is the council gonna accept your resignation?
A one dollars.
We would probably have to have that motion, that be, accept your resignation.
I reluctantly make a motion to accept the resignation.
And I almost said it.
We have a motion and a second to set Richard Wilson's resignation from council position. I'd like to ask for any discussion?
Will that be effective in the meeting?
It will be.
From my understanding, his new position pays more than council.
This is the deciding factor.
Actually, I will probably step in here just a little bit on the discussion part of it. David has been a very, you know, I've sat here, well, 14 years almost, and, and we've gone through a lot of council people, and I'm gonna say David's a very, been a very good council member. I might not say that when you get over there and I sit over there, but now I'm saying that to you as a council member, and we appreciate what you've done for the state.
Thank you. Thank you all, too.
Okay, there being then, any further discussion? All in favor by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? All right, now I can actually, you have anything else? Oh, you're out now, sorry, you're a sailor.
At the end.
Okay. Okay, I can bring up now. Also, David said on the CATPC, and we don't have to do this tonight, but I want somebody to start thinking about that position. We will have to fill that position since he is now off the council. But if anybody wanna step forward tonight, we can bring it to the table tonight.
Well, I've already thought of somebody. I think he would do a position.
Yes, as a council member, position.
I, I think he perpetually would do great to fill that position. He's, he's got the time, I mean, he doesn't do anything all day, so. Work two days a week. No, but he would do great, I think he did, addition to the CATPC council. And I'm on there, so. What does it meet? It meets on council meeting day in the morning, at 8:30 in the morning. And if Rick shows up, we're not done till like 11 or 12, but if Rick doesn't show up, we're done by about 10 o'clock.
Soon as Rick gets on them Christmas lights.
Will you accept that position?
Sure.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to put him on the CATPC.
Second.
Okay. Okay, all in favor by aye? Won't even have a question on this. All in favor by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? Motion carried. Congratulations.
Thank you. We've got a retreat coming up, so I'll keep up.
Okay, I only have one more on my list, and that is the process that y'all asked for that we go through for our new council position. We have six so far, and I've contacted all six of them. We, they, five of them will be at the next October 12th meeting, five of them will be here. One has requested, and that's Mark Garner. He does, he's down in Houston now, helping out with some company down there, calling out of retirement to help, and he said he didn't know if he'd be able to be back or not, and he requested if we could do a teleconference. And I said, I, I don't really have a problem with that. If the council doesn't, we can do that. He may be back, though, he may be back, but he had requested that. And does anybody have an issue there? Okay, I will tell him that if he doesn't make it back, we can do the tele.
Are you willing to limit the time that they could speak?
Three minutes, three minutes, and, but that leaves an opening for y'all, a few more questions.
Can you give us the names?
Everybody got this in here? It's, I'm gonna see if I can go down the list here. Mark Garner, Johnny Savage.
John O.
John O.
Sandy Ramsey.
You're good. I gave you that list, though, didn't I? Sandy Ramsey. Uh, go ahead and tell them what the others two are.
I don't remember the one that.
Chris Paul.
Pardon?
Chris Paul.
Chris Paul. How many is that?
There's one more.
Steve Davis.
Steve Davis.
That's it, right.
Should've brought the list in there. But anyway, they will all be here except maybe Mark, so they've all committed to being here. Does anybody else want me to tell them anything else? Are y'all good with that? Okay, does any council people have anything else they wanna bring to the table?
Mr. Mayor, I wanna thank again, watching the, his jet put the stuff up, I really wanna thank Walmart again for putting these up, and so that we can see, and the public can see some of this information.
Been a great addition, Mayor.
A council president.
Works good, yeah. I hit my pen, well, we need to thank them much for the pen.
I don't have any personal comments, but I would like to recognize the copies, I think they came to address the council tonight.
Yes, I was gonna open up to the citizens. Okay, I will open up to the citizens now.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Just give up there.
We had a wild duck show up at our house.
Could you give us your name, please?
My name is Katie, and this is Emily. Come here. A wild duck showed up at our house, May 3rd. She was about this big, could hold her in one hand, soaking wet during the big floods that we had. She showed up starving to death and decided that she was making our home hers. So she has stayed there since May. She was attacked by a neighbor's pit bull puppy about six weeks ago. We took her to the vet, paid her vet bill to make sure she was okay. We thought she was gonna have to be put down. Whole house was in tears, but they saved her. We brought her home, nursed her back to health. She's all good, lives outside. We don't keep her caged up. So I was told the other day that we weren't allowed to have her because of the city ordinance that states you're allowed to have chickens, but not any other fowl inside city limits. So my argument is that birds are foul, which people have inside their house in the city limits. And also ducks and geese live down at the park, which is in fact inside city limits because they don't care. They have a ton of disregard for city limits. She picked us, and she loves us, and we love her, and she's a member of our family. And she was wild. She has domesticated herself. We are not keeping a domestic duck, and it would be detrimental to her health to let her go. She's spoiled rotten. She eats her oatmeal every morning, she eats her carrots and chopped apples, and so we are asking to be able to just keep her.
Was everybody looking for? Ma'am, you want, want me to go ahead and raise it?
And another issue on that one, that she's a nuisance to the neighbors. So we have got signatures of our neighbors that say she is not a bother, but in fact, they love her.
Hey, but in this actual happen, yeah. Mayor?
Most of the enforcement of our city codes are complaint based, so if you don't get a complaint, no one.
And the call that they did get was not complaining on her, but she was, she goes across the street sometimes because our neighbors have a big puddle when it rains, and.
It's not actually yours.
No, we're hers.
It's nature's.
That's right. She just loves us.
It's nature, that's all I need to know.
She selected you.
That's right.
Mr. Young, is, are you saying that if it's, if it doesn't crack, it's not a duck, right?
I know, but all Harris, she does eat, she's a lot of all.
If you had it caged, if you had it caged, I would say you'd be in violation, but if it's in a snatch, you know.
There's a little tall kennel on the horse that she can go into, we should want to see, but we don't shut her in, she just.
Enforcement of most of those kinda codes in Harrison are complaint based. If you don't get a complaint, then.
Then we're all good.
Well, I'm not gonna buy one unless it's smoking at the park.
We already know what you guys do to the ducks down at the park. You pay a lot of money to try to get rid of it, too?
Thank you. The list there is a complaint, he says, don't worry about it.
Thank you.
Does anybody else in the audience have anything to do? Since we brought up, we didn't bring geese up, but ducks up.
You want to report?
Well.
I tracked it all week.
They're still there?
No, they're.
All 19?
We had, we had on Monday, we've gone from 76 down to 19 down to zero. Yes. And the ducks are still there.
Good, so good.
When did you count zero? Cause I was running yesterday.
I go, I checked it at 10 every day.
Okay. I was a little earlier than that, so. There's not a lot, but there was, there was at least three or four that morning.
I checked, I went and checked at 10 every day, so.
Wade's had some monitoring done, also, what he told me is that the ones that actually, some are there every once in a while, but they're not getting out of the water, they're standing in the water, so.
They do seem to be, when, we don't leave the units out during the night, but during the day when we have them out, and we have had, even when I, we still had 70 plus down there. We go, I go by every now and then, and they, for whatever reason, seem to be staying closer to water instead of wandering up into the playground equipment and the, and the trails and stuff like that.
What time are you putting out the?
They put them out.
Before daylight, after daylight?
They, they're probably in the neighborhood of 7:30-ish.
So I was running before that.
Yeah.
Same as it be working, let's put it that way.
It seems to be helping right now. The real test will be next year, once, you know, we're living in the season for them to be coming back in, just we'll wanna have these fees in place and, and other measures and try to, the population can get an active call.
Okay, that's everything. I'll entertain a motion, Mr. Magnet. Oh, yes, sir. Mr. Magnet, you might be in your bed tonight, okay? I'll entertain a motion for a jury. All in favor?